Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 21st meeting of the Hoover City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to an end and ask that please call her on.
Council President Wyatt.
Here.
Council Proton Paisley. Council Member Sweeney.
Here.
Council Member Driver.
Here.
Council Member Murphy.
Present.
Council Member Middlebrook.
Here.
Council Member Replin.
Here.
With the court established, we will move forward. If anyone would please rise for the invitation and remain standing for the pleasure of meeting.
Senator Gibbs. Dear Senator Gibbs, please be with all affected by the wildfires in Hawaii. Also be with our police officer who lost his grandfather too. May you not put them during this time and be with them always. May you also be with everyone during the heat this week to make sure the temperature has not reached the level predicted. Thank you also for us being able to meet here tonight and for the council having wisdom and understanding for the issues of weather. And may your son Jesus Christ, amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mayor is out of town tonight, so we have no presentations on his behalf. So we will begin with the presentation from Mrs. Mindy Wyatt, who's here on behalf of the Hoover Parks and Recreation National Plan. Ms. Wyatt?
Alright, good evening. Thank you guys so much for letting us be here tonight. We are very, very excited to bring you the preliminary findings from the public engagement base of our Hoover Parks and Public Spaces Recreation Plan. Want to take a moment to acknowledge our steering committee members that are here, Joe Winnie, Kenneth Fox, and Jonathan Belcher, and our project team members that are here, Chad Albacca, Aaron Kolbal, Matt Martin, Greg Knighton, Colin Conner, Mark Pepper, and Jordan Yopper. It is due to the strength of this team and what everybody brings to the table that has made this project a success so far. So, everybody deserves all the credit in the world for what I'm about to show you. We're very excited to be here. Let's see if this works. Okay. So one of the things that we did was start with some town hall meetings. And we had some events that led us up to, starting with Celebrate Hoover Day. That was probably one of the best decisions that we made. We had about 500 people come through that and then, and historically, we were able to present to them. It was just a walkthrough style, so we had a lot of, uh, whatever you can do back there. We had a walkthrough style where we were able to engage with folks, have them walk around and look at different exhibits, give us feedback, have that one-on-one conversation that was so very important. We had three additional town hall meetings, and then we had a virtual meeting. We had multiple focus group meetings as well. And again, we had great participation due to the strength and expertise of our project team and our steering committee. We also did an online survey, and when I tell you the results, and the participation levels were through the roof. That is nothing less than the truth. Standard response rate is about 1%. For a public survey, we were at about 4%. So, that is phenomenal. It speaks to the level of interest from the community for a project like this and the importance of parks and recreation as a whole. What you see in front of you is how the areas of Hoover responded. You can see that Area 2 in the green and Area 1 in the yellow are the most populous areas for response. And then you can see how the other areas line up and how that defines. That was self-identified, so there's no par boundaries there, but it gives us a good representation of where folks are responding from. So we want to talk a little bit about our favorite parks. And this was an exercise from the town hall that was turned into a heat map and so you can get an idea of where people actually use the parks in Hoover. And of course, you can read the map for yourselves. But most people do drive to our parks, some about a five-minute drive. There are plenty of people that had over a 20-minute drive. Trails and gardens are among our top existing amenities. Our top visited parks were Moss Rock Preserve, Veterans Park, Aldridge Gardens, and the Hoover Met Complex and Finley Center and Splash Pad altogether. The community and neighborhood parks were listed as among the most desired. And we'll get into some charts and graphs on what we do. In your packet, you have about a 50-page report. And I'm going to spare you those details. I'll let you go through that on your own. If you're the type that likes charts and data, you should have. You have the report that you are welcome to get into. What we really wanted to do tonight was just present you these top-level findings. Oh, and back on that slide, Placer has, places about 3.63 million visits to Hoover Parks over the last 12 months. And that's phenomenal. That tells us our parks are being used. So, into the data. Five things that we do well. Our park conditions. We have an overall satisfaction rate of 3.3 to 3.5. That's on a 1 to 5 scale with 5 being the best. People are most satisfied with our outdoor athletic fields. They scored a 3.5 out of 5. The Finley Center ranked 4.6 out of 5, and the Met Complex ranked 4.3 out of 5. We just got phenomenal scores across the board for our park amenities, the features, the conditions, how well-maintained they are. Just very, very good scores on that. We also do youth sports programs very well. The average rating on that, actually, I didn't put that down on the text, I apologize. But we do this very well, but it was also ranked very important. And so they ask people how important is something and how well is that need met? This score high on votes. So that tells us that we are delivering excellent services, and we want to continue to do so. Our senior center was consistently highly ranked throughout the survey. Our therapeutics and athletics were some of the highest-ranked programming outside of youth sports. And our special events, as with youth sports programs, we do this well, and it is ranked as very important to residents. So we want to continue that good work. We have four ways to improve. What can we do better? We can tell our story better. You'll see later that one of the biggest barriers to youth were, people weren't hearing about the opportunities and the amenities that we have. So we know that we need to do a better job telling our story and communicating through social media channels, through a marketing plan, through more concentrated marketing efforts. The next thing that we can do better is improve accessibility. We have a universal design ordinance now that was recently adopted by council that will help us ensure that future parks are well-accessible. But we still have challenges in our older parks and facilities, and that was noted in the survey. I want to make sure that we address that. Improvement insisting access, that kind of edged out slightly, creating new parks, particularly by residents. But both residents really thought that we should focus on creating new amenities and improving the old amenities. But improving what we have did edge out creating new slightly. And then we want to expand our focus. Non-sports outdoor recreation continuously topped the list for desired, but underserved. This includes things like hiking, walking, mountain biking, kayaking, and other outdoor recreation. Three recurring ideas that came forth, a lot of this came through the town hall meetings and the open-ended comments that you see in the surveys. So what are we hearing? What continually just kind of floated to the surface as being desired and requested by both residents and non-residents? They are skate park. We had over 750 comments from the survey and town halls requesting a skate park in Hoover. We had almost 400 comments in favor of more pickleball courts in Hoover. And we didn't have quite as many mentions, but preserving Hoover's historical assets along Blood Park and Rock Gap are very important to residents and non-residents. And then, it's not on the list, but Outdoor Pool gets an honorable mention, because we did have a lot of folks recognize that. I will say about these recurring ideas, our survey company tells us that, as best they can tell, these responses are mostly unique. They didn't see any evidence of anybody trying to game the system or go in and flood the system with a certain amount of requests or something. So they gave us a certain measure of comfort that these are truly numbers that we can count on as far as demand or requests. And then we have our connections. This is largely about the system as a whole. So, what are the benefits of a parks and recreation system? Our respondents identified the natural environment, and this is how we connect to nature, is very, very important. And how we preserve and protect our natural assets for future generations was ranked as very important. And then our social environment. People see parks as part of their community identity and a way to achieve health and fitness goals. Health was the top identified benefit of a Blue Way Greenway system. And people identified, indicated that they use parks to practice a sport and maintain their health and fitness levels and to socialize. So that brings us to number one, which of our top priority. This was consistently ranked as the top priority across the board, regardless of how the surveys or conversations were initiated. So in the town halls, paved walking loops was ranked as number one. Hiking and unpaved trails were ranked as number three. Blue Way access was ranked as number four. Ranked highest in importance of the priority and in importance in the survey were to expand the trails and the greenways. That was number one. And Blue Way and access to the Kahawa was number five. I heard shaded and paved quite often. And the top uses of this type of a system in order were walking, hiking, enjoying nature, running, biking, and boating. So I wanted to leave you with those comments and ask if you have any questions. I'm happy to entertain those. Alright, so where do we go next? We are working on a draft plan that we hope to bring you later in the fall. We hope to have this fully adopted by Thanksgiving. We're going to try our best to hold to that. In the meantime, today we kick off a regional trails planning study. This is actually a subsidiary study of the Parks and Public Spaces Plan. Hoover is uniquely positioned to link Jefferson and Shelby County, and we have the Kahawa flowing right through the middle of our city. And so we see us as being an important key in a regional trail system that could span all of central Alabama. The purpose of this study is to examine those factors, talk to our different stakeholders, look at different systems to see how they have succeeded and how they organized. What are our next steps? What do we need to do? So we've seen over and over again that trails should be our number one priority. This study will kind of get us a little bit further down the road than we would be able to on our own. And it is designed to give us just that little bit of a head start that we need. The findings will be incorporated into the plan, so this study will coincide with our overall parks plan and wrap at the same time. And so I'd like to introduce Jeremy Weiss from the Park Board, and he's going to talk just a few more minutes about the study and make a very important presentation for us.
Thank you, Mindy, and thank you to the council for the opportunity to make a couple of additional comments. As you all know, the Park and Public Spaces Recreation Plan was conducted with land design. It was funded through generous donations by Mr. Jonathan Belcher at Signature Homes. So we thank them for that, as well as the generous donation from the city council, or the generous funding from the city council. As Mindy said, going into the survey, we felt confident that trails were very important to our city and to our residents. And everything that we have learned since December, through focus groups, town halls, survey results, have all confirmed that. As you just heard, trails have risen to the top of that list. So, we are excited, as a result, to share with you that Mr. Belcher at Signature Homes has generously committed an additional $10,000 to fund a regional trail feasibility study. The study will be conducted with map level, level design. And the goal is to complete this study before Thanksgiving and incorporate those findings into the overall survey. On a personal note, I would just like to mention that I've had the opportunity to talk numerous times with Mr. Joe Winnie, who is on our steering committee, and just to hear his passion, as well as from others, their passion about thoughtfully creating a master plan to connect the trails in our region. Creating opportunities for walking, jogging, biking, to literally connect our communities with one another, as well as other points of interest. In addition, on a personal note, these things have become increasingly important to me, to my family. As my boys get older, they've gotten into cross-country, into running and mountain biking. Maybe one day they'll get me out there. So, it is a personal interest to us and so many other families in Hoover. So on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Board, again, we appreciate Signature Homes' donation to fund the trail feasibility study. And as importantly, just in talking with Jonathan, just his personal commitment of time and interest in supporting a strong public-private partnership to enhance opportunities such as this and experiences that we will create for residents of Hoover for the future. So, thank you for the opportunity to make some additional comments. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. President, I want to comment firstly, thank you all for the presentation. Truly appreciate it. And I might have missed this. I know Hoover has invested quite a bit of money into the sidewalks throughout the city. Any commentary, if you made a statement, that's fine. Any commentary around that? I don't see many people using sidewalks for running. I'm hearing it's bad on their knees and things. I need to like prefer the trails and asphalt and grass area, but we have invested quite a bit into sidewalks.
I can speak to that. So sidewalks are very well, and they're much requested in the plan.
Okay.
It is considered in the trail study.
It's true, okay.
And we have a current bike and ped plan that will also be referenced by this study and incorporated into this study as well.
Thank you, Mr. President.
First, first, any other questions for Ms. Wyatt, Mr. Weiss?
I'd like to add the thanks to Mr. Belcher from Signature Homes. Thank you so much for your generosity and for your, just getting of your time and expertise in this project. Really enjoyed working with you so far and appreciate your commitment to the community as a developer. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. I don't think, in fact, I know without Mr. Belcher and Signature's contribution, this next phase would not have. So, I don't think we can oversell that. So, Mr. Belcher, thank you all.
She did a lot of, she did a lot of work here.
I understand.
She did a lot of work.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation. Yes, sir. Thank you all. We'll next have a presentation from Ms. Bolt on her July financials.
This screen's not up. I'm hesitant. Thank you, council. This will be my last monthly financial presentation, as I will be retiring effective October 1st. Before you are the July preliminary financials, this is the 10th month of the fiscal year and 83% of budget. Revenues continue to be strong and are already at 95% of budget with still two months remaining of the fiscal year. So as you can see, our total expenditures are below 83%. We are, our expenditure is 69.4. I can tell you after we did some of our budget meetings with departments that they had been told to spend the remaining budget with things that they had on next year's request. So that should be about 98% by the time we close out the year. So you will see that definitely go up, which means our expenditure will go up. So that, if we, so right now, our net change in our fund amounts is 37.4 million. Again, that is not surplus, that is in our reserves, but is already allocated. So looking at our revenues, so you can see our total sales and use tax is at 99%. You will see actually a lot of these other categories, other taxes, licenses and permits, are coming in and they're already over budget at this point. Our total interest, as you can see, as we've discussed many times, that our investments are definitely profitable at this point. And that is at, you know, from what we budgeted, you know, over 331%. So, breaking that down, our, our sales tax from what we collected last year in July to this year, we are above that, which we saw phenomenal year last year. So the difference between the different taxes is 3.8 million. You'll see the majority of that in the general sales tax of 2 million. So you will, based upon the economy and what we're looking at locally and what we are looking at nationally. In July, the national economy kind of recovered a little bit, it came out a little bit stronger. The jog growth actually increased a little bit where it had been falling the last two or three months. We continue to be strong, we've not seen a decrease. The only decrease that you'll see is in that casual sales tax, and it's been fluctuating a little bit. Sometimes it's under what we collected last year, sometimes, and you'll see it's only 15,000 over at this point. But our revenues continue to be strong. You will see our expenditures to go up before we close out the fiscal year.
Any questions for Ms. Bolt? Ms. Bolt, I was entertaining a question from my colleague when you made a very important announcement at the start of your presentation. We're sad to see, did you hear that news? But we're happy for you. You've been an incredible asset not only to the city of Hoover, but Hoover City Schools, Huntsville City Schools, Jackson County Schools, I could go on and on. But your legacy in the state of Alabama and indeed the city of Hoover will be felt for many, many years. And we respect your decision, and we wish you all the best. Thank you. We will look to add a resolution number 7010-23 to the regular agenda. And I would ask for a motion and a second to that. And of course, this would just be a motion to add it to the agenda. There will be plenty of time for discussion on the regular agenda. So is there a motion on the floor for a 7010-23 item for the regular agenda?
Mr. President, motion to amend the agenda to add resolution number 7010-23, second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. We'll now begin with our consent agenda. As those who are present, as they've become accustomed to, items 1 through 19 are presented as items. It'll be on the consent agenda. These items will be read collectively and voted on as non-block vote. There will be no discussion about any item listed on the consent agenda. However, if there's a member of the body who would like to remove an item from the consent, we'll entertain that now.
Mr. President, if we could remove resolution number 6998-23 to the regular agenda.
We will remove item 14, move it to regular. Any other item that a member would like to move? Do you have the public here to speak on any item listed on the consent? If so, we'd be happy to remove it to regular. Stephen, Mr. Corley, if you'll read the items.
Item number 1 is the approval of amendments from the June 5th, 2023 meeting. Item 2, payment of bills. Item 3, resolution 6989-23 approves an alcohol license for Riverchase Vev LLC, DBA Riverchase Country Club located in 2000 Club Road, Hoover, Alabama, for the sale of 160 special retail more than 30 days. Resolution 6990-23 authorizes Mayor Baccato to execute a mutual aid consortium agreement with the Alabama Association of Fire Chiefs for the city of Hoover, Alabama, to join the Alabama Association of Fire Chiefs Mutual Aid Consortium. Resolution 699123 authorizes Mayor Baccato to execute a mutual aid agreement and authorizes Chief Bentley to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Kahawa Valley Fire Emergency Medical Rescue District to provide mutual aid in the memorandum of fact in certain areas of coverage. Resolution 6992-23 authorizes Mayor Baccato to execute a mutual aid agreement and authorizes Chief Bentley to execute a MOU with the North Shelby Fire District to provide mutual aid in the memorandum of fact in certain areas of coverage. Item 7, resolution 6993-23 authorizes Mayor Baccato to execute mutual aid agreement and Chief Bentley to execute MOU with the city of Pelham for mutual aid and to support those areas of coverage. Item 6994-23, same thing, mutual aid agreement with Rocky Ridge Fire District. Resolution 699523 is the same agreement with the city of Vestape Hills. Resolution 7000-23 is authorizes Mayor Baccato, Chief Bentley to execute a memorandum of understanding with Hoover City Schools for the use of city personnel in the Riverchase Career Connection Center and Fire Emergency Services Academy. Resolution 699623 amends resolution 680822, which approved additional aids on SR 261 from Bearden Road to SR 3 or US 31, authorizes Mayor Baccato to execute an agreement for such amendment. Resolution number 700123 adopts the annual transportation plan for fiscal year 2024 in compliance with Act Number 2019-2. Resolution 6997-23 accepts a bid for bid number 23-11 for event supply aid rental from special occasions rental and authorizes Mayor Baccato to execute any such documents necessary for that agreement. Resolution number 700223 authorizes Mayor Baccato to execute an agreement with Placer AI and any and all documents necessary for the execution of that agreement for data subscription services. Resolution 700323 authorizes Mayor Baccato to execute an agreement with Economic Research Services and for a study to analyze how a decrease in the grocery tax would impact the city's tax revenue. Resolution number 700523 reappoints Bobby Humphrey to the Public Park and Recreation Board for the city of Hoover for a term ending September 30th, 2029. Resolution 700623 reappoints Lynn Cummings to the Public Park and Recreation Board for the city for a term ending September 30th, 2029. And resolution 700723 authorizes Mayor Baccato to sign and submit an application for the Multi-Modal Project Discretionary Grant, which is for the National Infrastructure Project Assistance Program and for the Infrastructure for Rebuilding America program.
Mr. President, motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception to resolution number 6998-23.
Second. We have a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. We'll now take up item number 14, resolution number 6998-23, Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year and except September 30th, 2023, as shown in Exhibit A.
Motion to approve resolution number 6998-23.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any question from the body, Mr. Corley?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I see an additional, um, additional risk management on here for 146,000 that we discussed on Thursday night. And just wondering what that's for.
This is specifically related to litigation the city's involved in, and be happy to share that information with you. Probably an executive session would be appropriate to discuss that.
Um, I apologize if I missed an email or phone call. But yeah, I personally, I'm, y'all may be aware of what's going on, but I'm not comfortable with anything I don't know about.
Happy to entertain.
You know, abstaining if we need to go into the executive session.
Be happy to entertain the motion to continue.
I will make a motion to continue.
Second. We have a motion and second to continue that item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the item is continued to the next regular scheduled meeting. And I'll take up item number 20, resolution number 6972-23, Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares a weed and other vegetation nuisance at 2152 Larchmont Circle and directs the abatement of that nuisance presented to Alabama law.
Motion to approve resolution number 6972-23.
Second. We have a motion and second. Mr. Martin, welcome back. Any updates from the Thursday night?
Yes, sir. We took pictures of this property today. The site was in earlier in the afternoon, and it is still in need of abatement.
Any questions for Mr. Martin from the body on item number 20? Any members of the public here to speak about the address in question? Hearing seat nine, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number 21 is resolution number 6999-23, Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares a weed and other vegetation nuisance and directs the abatement of such nuisance presented to Alabama law at the following properties located in the city of Hoover, 3416 Secret Crest Circle, 317 Linda Avenue, 297 Job Park and Parkway.
Motion to approve resolution number 6999-23.
Second. We have a motion and second for approval. Any questions or comments? Mr. Martin, you have data on that?
Yes, sir. We also visited these three sites today. In addition to a couple of others we had on the, to the Thursday. These three locations are still in need of an abatement and declaring them a nuisance. We had a couple of other properties that were cut over the weekend.
Questions for Mr. Martin? Any one of the public here to speak about the addresses listed? Seat nine, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number 22, ordinance number 23-2618, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends Section 8
This ordinance amends section eight point oh six point oh three and eight point oh six point oh four of the zoning ordinance of Hoover, Alabama, to clarify the notification requirements for major changes to a planned unit development. Public hearing is set for August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve ordinance number two three dash two six one eight.
Second. We have a motion and second for adoption of ordinance two three dash two six one eight. Mr. Martin, third time for us to hear about this. Anything to change on the first couple?
No changes since the, uh, first reading.
I'll remind the members that this is simply bringing our PUD notifications in line with changes for other zoning classifications?
Yes, sir. If, if bullets are greater than ten years old and the subject of the rezoning is singular property with less than twenty percent of the planned unit development.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Martin from the body on the adoption of the ordinance? Any questions for the public tonight on this item? Seeing none, item court, please call the room.
Mr. Swinney?
Aye.
Ms. Driver?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Bunch of middle works?
Aye.
Mr. McLitten?
Aye.
Mr. Lorna?
Aye.
With those six ayes and zero nays, the, uh, the motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. We'll move to the item that was amended, resolution number seven zero dash one zero, I'm sorry, seven zero one zero dash two three, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance authorizes the city clerk to execute a disclosure and operate authorization form with Regent's Bank.
Motion to approve resolution number seven zero one zero dash two three.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Dickerson, if you don't mind, give us a quick rundown on what we're doing here.
Yes, this is just a, uh, form that they have us do for, um, the, the different counts at different times, so this is just an abatement and getting that form signed and having a big form in there.
It's my understanding we were alerted to this, this afternoon?
That's correct.
It needs to be done by?
Tomorrow.
Okay, so part of the coming.
Yeah, they sent it out for four today, and thankfully y'all got a meeting tonight, so it's gonna need to be done tomorrow.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Dickerson from the body on this item? Any questions from the public tonight? We have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. We'll now have the first reading on item number twenty-three, resolution number six nine eight eight dash two three, Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares a weed and other vegetation nuisance at twenty-one sixty-one Kelly Lane, twenty-one thirty-seven Lane Gate Drive, and two forty-two Russell Post Drive, directs the abatement of that nuisance pursuant to Alabama law. Public hearing set for September fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir. Uh, each of these properties is currently upgrown, and, uh, would like to move towards abating these nuisances.
Very good. This is a first reading only. We will gather again at our next meeting, the first meeting in September, and hope that we have a resolution for that. If not, Mr. Martin will be back here to give us an update and perhaps a second reading and vote. Any general comments or questions tonight from the body? Any of the public would like to come forth and speak? Chief, looks like you're on a mission to come to my, or to the bathroom. I think that's right.
Hey, I'd just like to remind everybody that, um, starting September the fifth, uh, we're hosting the National Combat Challenge, uh, here in Hoover at the Metropolitan Complex, and it will be all week, and we've emailed you guys on multiple occasions to make you aware of that. We want to get that information out to the public. I think Randy, the Randy campaign is doing a good job advertising that, so help us with that. And then, uh, on Saturday, the ninth, will be our Memorial Stair climb. That will, uh, culminate on Saturday, and so we would love to see you guys there. Anybody from the public who would like to participate, uh, we'd love to see you there as well, so look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Anyone else in the public, yes, ma'am?
KT Thomas, fourteen twenty-six Scout Trace. I'm confused about something new tonight. Payment of bills was on the agenda for August seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and then tonight. However, payment of bills has not been on the agenda going back to November sixteenth, twenty-twenty. Sixty-four regular city council meetings did not include payment of the bills. I'm assuming they got paid. The Hoover website states, "All bills are reviewed and approved by the city council during regular meetings." This is stated in the open checkbook section of the Hoover website. So the bills were paid without permission of the council for two and a half years, more than two and a half years? This situation seems to me to compromise the separation of the branches of government and, and, it was an oversight, a statement to that effect would bring at least a bit of transparency, and I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. House. The payment of bills did not require by law to be voted on. It is an item I have added back to the agenda just to give us an opportunity to review and, and make a voice vote on each meeting, uh, but thank you for asking that. Any other comments or questions tonight? Seeing none? Thank you for your attendance, Richard.